Well, good evening. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley Evans School District Six. Today is the 13th day of May 2024. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll for us, please?
Director Azari.
Present.
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Spitsi.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Present.
Director Sullivan. Six board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Well, again, welcome to our Board of Education meeting. We're so glad to see you, those that are joining us in person and those that are joining us online. Thank you for joining as well. I just want to go give you a few updates on our district before we can move forward with our meeting. And the first one of those is that we had some special visitors this week, last week, actually, that last Thursday or Wednesday, one of those, we had the United Nations choose District Six. And actually, it was state officials who were chosen by the United Nations. Delegate from the United Nations wanted to see what American schools were doing. She works in education around the world, and she wanted to look at what the American education system was doing. She looked at two states, Indiana and Colorado. And so when she contacted state officials in Colorado about where she should visit, they gave her our name. And she came last week to see what our education system is doing. And we took her to Toynton K-8, and she got to meet with parents and interview parents and ask them how education was working for them. She also got to interview some of our students and ask them how the education system was working for them. So it wasn't a lot that we contributed other than it was such an honor to be selected and to get to represent the United States in that way. And so we're very thankful for the state for recognizing us as a district and just wanted to let everyone know that. That happened very quickly, and I'm not sure how much press that got, but we wanted to let everyone know that the United Nations, or at least a delegate, not the entire United Nations, but a delegate from the United Nations was here. Some other big news, and you might remember this from our last board meeting, I spoke about House Bill 1448. And that bill was to significantly change the funding formula in the state of Colorado for the way schools are funded. And I don't need to go into the, or don't have time to go into all of what was changed in that bill. But this is something that this school system has been working on for over 10 years. In 2013, this was our school district, as well as one more, were the two school districts that were working to change this funding formula so that our rural schools and schools that serve students in poverty would get a greater share of the funding that what we were hoping for and what eventually passed was a student-centered funding formula that funds the programs that students need. And so this is something that has been, people have been trying to pass, people from Greeley have been trying to pass for over a decade. And it finally passed, it did actually pass this week, passed both the House and the Senate and our state legislature. And so we are super excited. This is a tremendous win for District Six. It is a tremendous win for our rural school districts in Colorado who can't depend as heavily on their own property values to fund their school districts. They need more from the state. And so, but this is a great win for students in Colorado and for a just system. And I do want to thank our superintendent. This is something that has been proposed many times, many times. We have been proponents of this, but it was her work, not only her sort of ability to speak to state representatives, but also the credibility that she has in this state and to use her voice, not just for this district. We certainly will benefit, but for students all across this state to have a more just funding formula. And I do not know that this bill would have passed without her. And so we're extremely proud of our superintendent in that effort. Then there are a few things on our agenda tonight that I want to draw your attention to. One, in our consent agenda, if you look at that, we have a couple of people who are retiring and a couple of people, we have a lot of people who are retiring. And we celebrated the retirement of our teachers a couple of weeks ago. But there are a couple of administrators who have been in this district a long time, and that's Ingrid Dillahay, who's been a principal in this district at Jackson for a number of years and has been a treasurer for this district. And also our chief of security, Mayor John Gates, is retiring at the end of June. And so we're very thankful to them for all the efforts that they have provided this school district, for the great support that they've provided this school district, for this district and for our students. And then I wanted to draw your attention to these ladies on my left, because this is their last school board meeting. If you join us for any time before this, you know that we have students that sit at our board table. They are here. When we get asked questions, or we get to ask questions of people that present things, they get to ask questions too. And so we always get a student perspective. And it has been Ms. Reagan Mendelis and also Ms. Natalie Valenzuela. Oh, I messed that up. I'm not looking at the name, but it is Natalie Valenzuela. And so they've been with us this entire year. It is a significant amount of work that they have put in, a significant amount of time that they have committed. And so they are both graduating in the next, what would that be, the next 10 days, something, 12 days, something like that. They will be graduates of District Six. So this is their last board meeting, and I wanted just to publicly thank them for all the time and effort that they've committed to this role and say best wishes to you guys as you go on to college and say, I'll say to you, Reagan, as I said to Natalie, it's only four years. It will go by quickly, and please come back. So that's all that I have tonight. So we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is to approve the agenda, and someone will need to make a motion.
I move that the Board of Education in Greeley Evans School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Sign none? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari.
Aye.
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is Chevron check presentation, and it was one of the things that we got to show off about this district when the delegate from the United Nations was here, just the number of partnerships that we have. Am I, we have something? I am skipping the superintendent. I don't know why that happened. We'll come back? Okay. All right. My apologies. I scrolled down too fast.
It's really exciting when we get to, yes, when our partners come and want to present big checks, so I understand. But my name is Julie Hill. I am the executive director of the Success Foundation and just really grateful to our partner in Chevron, we have Trudy Boyd here tonight, the corporate affairs manager for the Rockies business unit of Chevron. And they've been just amazing partners for several years. This year, or tonight, she's presenting another big check, which will help to support the Toynton Academy of Pre-Engineering Robotics Programming, the Career and Technical Education Center, and just can't thank you enough. I don't know if you'd like to say a few words, but I think just a great opportunity to get a picture here. Maybe I can hold it up, too. So I am delighted to be back. I think this is my second check presentation. I guess I should turn it this way. So nice to see you all here. And again, Chevron is delighted to partner with District Six. We're just, I feel like over the years, ever since I've been here, we have deepened our partnership. We have kind of dug deeper and understood what the needs were for the school district and where we can make an impact. So again, in the robotics program, the career and technical center, really just helping to make support you, the project, Lead the Way, Success Foundation that Julie runs. So Dr. Pilch, you know, we are big fan of yours. We were just at the Toynton School a couple of weeks ago with our new head of our business unit, super impressive as always. But I really also want to say I'm just really grateful for how you're supporting children throughout the school system, right? And career and jobs and whatever their calling may be. So delighted to be here again. We're happy to present this check tonight, and we hope to be back many times. One thing I failed to mention, Chevron not only contributes significantly financially, but giving their time and providing engineers and providing some real-world opportunities to our students. So I was telling Trudy earlier, we not only appreciate that financial support, but the real active involvement in making District Six a better place to be. So thank you. But yes, come on up and we'll get you.
One of the things that we got to talk about with the delegate from the United Nations were the number of great partners that we have in this community. And Chevron certainly is one of the greatest, and we appreciate the partnership that you have provided and again, the real-world opportunities you're providing for our students. So thank you very much for being here. And so Dr. Pilch, at this point, I'll go back to your superintendent's honor roll. I'm so sorry for skipping you.
No, it's quite all right, President Matthews. I can recognize people at any point in this agenda tonight. I too want to say a huge thank you to Chevron. Tracy, thank you so much for your leadership and support of District Six, and your team has been truly remarkable, and we are fortunate to have Chevron as one of our many, many partners. And they've just stepped up over and over again to support us. I want to recognize tonight in the superintendent's honor roll, first, Ms. Tracy Rodriguez, who is a teacher at Billy Martinez. So Tracy, come on up to the podium, so you don't have to stand alone. Maybe Ms. Draper would come stand next to you. But I really do want you there while I get to talk about why you're being recognized tonight. So this is a first for us. I've not seen one of these before, but Tracy is being recognized because she's been named the Crumble Teacher of the Year in Colorado. So only one teacher in the state of Colorado receives this honor, and Ms. Rodriguez was chosen out of more than 1,000 nominations in the state. And you know, I think for people who eat at Crumble Cookies, they probably know a lot about this award. But it was the first we'd heard of it, and we couldn't ask for somebody stronger than Ms. Rodriguez to be recognized. I want to just read for you, Tracy, I don't know if you've seen the nomination, but I want to just read for you what was written in your nomination. Tracy is an amazing imagination station teacher. She runs the smart lab at Billy Martinez and provides opportunities for kindergarten and kindergarten through fifth graders to participate in STEAM activities on a daily basis. Whether it be science demonstrations, students printing their designs on the 3D printer, or students coding robots, or the many other activities available, she is fully engaged groups who love coming to her class. She is so excited to be able to give students opportunities that are rare, rare opportunities in public schools. She also co-runs the after-school program at Billy Martinez and really does drive and has driven the change that we've seen at Billy Martinez over the years. And then your nominator said, she is amazing, in all capital letters. So I want to just remind you all, take you back in history a little bit. Our very first smart labs were at Billy Martinez Elementary and Krista S. McCullough K-8 STEAM Academy. And here we have today, the teacher who actually runs that smart lab and helps to lead STEM and STEAM initiatives at Billy Martinez. Billy Martinez is a school of innovation, and you may remember, well, people remember, a decade ago, this school was on turnaround. And Ms. Draper and her team of teachers and other folks at her building dug in, developed an innovation plan that really focused on project-based learning and STEAM activities. And Tracy, we wouldn't be where we are today without you and your leadership. And we thank you. You will get a cash award, as I understand it, from Crumble Cookies, and our local Crumble Cookie store has doubled that award for you. And the owner here is John, I think it's Gattier, and the store manager is Jocelyn Perks. And we want to thank them for their generosity and their support of teachers and their support of public education. Tracy has been in our district for nine years, and we're grateful you choose to call District Six your home and your school district. Congratulations on this well-deserved recognition. Would you like to say a few words? Would you like to say a few words, Tracy?
Just, I'm very honored and humbled by all of this, so thank you so very much.
So I just want to remind everyone that folks can be nominated by anyone in the community or the district for the superintendent's honor roll. And Tracy was nominated by a colleague to receive superintendent's honor roll. So great honor. The other superintendent's honor roll recipient I have tonight is a group, and it is the group of the Council of Student Representatives and their Leadership Council. So I'm going to first introduce to you the leadership, and I think they're here tonight and maybe some other members as well. But Reagan Mendelis, who serves at the far corner, and Natalie Valenzuela, who serves next to me, and then Lulya, check, I didn't see Lulya. want to congratulate you and thank you for all that you've done. Who would like to talk?
Did you get a tie?
I just want to say that the Council of Student Representatives, um, I've been on this council for three years, and it has been one of the most influential, significant things I've ever been a part of. Um, I really appreciate the opportunity to be a part of it and for so long too. Um, not only has it helped me with leadership skills, like getting to go to Casby and developing those kinds of skills, um, I was so terrified to be president at the beginning of this year, um, scared to make agendas and try to figure out how to guide kids my age, you know? Um, but it developed into something where I was like, okay, this was scary at first, and then I'm able to handle it now. Um, and I, I feel like those leadership skills I wouldn't have gotten if it weren't for the Council of Student Representatives. So I really appreciate that opportunity, and then the opportunities to go to Casby and the Capitol and all things like that. Um, but not only that, but the fact that we get to come up here and share our student voice. I think that's extremely important in a school district because that's what a school district is, is students. Um, so having us up there is super significant in everything that the district does, and I really appreciate that you guys listen to us, um, and include us in those things. So, thank you.
I also want to kind of echo what Reagan has said. I just want to thank everyone here for all the opportunities and the people that I've met to be shown such great examples of leadership, and that has instilled in me as well, uh, the values of leadership and just how important it is to make change in our world, and that I see you guys make change in our district for us and for our futures. So I'd just like to say thank you for everything, and just thank you, yes.
Well, I kind of already gave my spiel, um, during the work session, but just again, another thank you to all of you. Um, this is a volunteer position. I don't think a lot of people know that. Um, I found that out when we were at Casby, and I, going to Casby was just eye-opening to me, um, because it truly put to perspective everything that our district does, um, for our students. And so, Dr. Pilch, again, thank you. You are the epitome of putting students first. Um, I don't think any district in Colorado does it like you, and you are, um, just the greatest, um, leader. Oh gosh, don't look at me because I'm getting emotional. Um, you are the epitome of just a leader and what it takes to run such an incredible district, and all of you as well. Um, I am just grateful for the opportunity you gave me, um, alongside with some of my bestest friends now. Um, Reagan I knew since seventh grade, Lulia kindergarten, and then Richard I met this year. Um, and so it was just amazing working with them, and I am just very grateful. I think grateful is just an understatement, but yeah, thank you.
Didn't leave any butter for the rest of us. Just buttered them all up. Um, I'm very grateful. I think it's super important to have, oh, wow. I've literally never known that. Wow.
That's the reason I know this.
Okay, that's impressive. I think, I think I'm, yeah, no, I know that I'm super grateful to have a voice, um, like, just here and in the district. I think comparing, when I heard what other districts were like and stuff, it just made me so much more grateful for the district that you guys are creating for us and that you guys are building each day with each choice that you make and putting students first. And to echo what Natalie said, this is a volunteer position, and I was like so shocked when I heard that because I was like, whoa, that's so much time. And I'm appreciative of that, and I know that a lot of students are. So, thank you for your time. Thank you for your commitment. Thank you for the choices you make every day to, you know, nourish children's minds and make sure that they have an environment where they can really grow and learn, which is important.
Thank you guys again for your service and the time and commitment that you put in, and we will, uh, we will miss you, and we will also be looking forward to seeing what, what you guys do, uh, over the next few years. So, uh, moving right along, we are going back to our Educator Appreciation Week. Uh, on our agenda it is, uh, but we, this is an action item that needs emotion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evans School District Six adopts the Honorary Proclamation declaring that Educator Appreciation Days be celebrated in the district during the spring of 2024.
Second. Thank you both. Before we go any further, Mr. Ozari, would you be so kind as to read this proclamation?
I'd be happy to do so, Mr. President. Honorary proclamation of the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six, Educator Appreciation Days. Whereas a well-educated public is essential to the preservation of our national freedom and our democratic system of government, and whereas the people of the United States have recognized that free access to a public education for all children is a vital component of a strong and vibrant country, and whereas the Board of Education recognizes and honors the important impact that teachers have on our children's education, and whereas a rich and well-rounded education includes curriculum, instruction, and support for the physical health and well-being of our children, and whereas children's education and success of their schools is also dependent upon exceptional and dedicated leadership at the school and district level, and whereas it is appropriate that teachers and educational leaders be publicly recognized for their dedication and commitment to educating all students. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six proclaims the following national recognition dates to be celebrated and recognized in our local schools and communities of Greeley and Evans during the spring of 2023. We have had Administrative Professionals Week, April 22nd to the 26th, Physical Education and Sport Week from May 1st through the 7th, School Lunch Hero Day, May 3rd, Teacher Appreciation Week, which was May 6th through the 10th, School Nurse Day, which was May 8th, and the National Educational Bosses Week, May 20th through 23rd. This was given under his hand and executive seal of the Weld County School District Six, the 13th day of May 2024, signed Michael Matthews, President.
Thank you, Mr. Ozari. Are there any questions or comments now on this proclamation? I will just say, um, that, uh, for, for all of these professionals, the administrative professionals in our district, the, um, physical education, our PE teachers, and those that support that, their, um, uh, school lunch, uh, and those that provide school lunch, teacher, teacher appreciation, um, week, and our, our teachers, uh, our, our school nurses, and, and our educational bosses, uh, those that, like our superintendent and our, and our principals and all of those who are bosses. We, these are the people who, who make this, this district run, uh, and you've already heard from our students how, how much this district has impacted them. You've heard from, um, from community members like Chevron, what, what they, uh, what they see and what they, what they hope for, for the students in this district. And it, and it comes down to these educational professionals each and every day. And so, but we are so thankful, uh, for, for you, and we appreciate all the work that you do. Any other comments from, from board members? Ms. Mash?
You did a great job as well, Michael, but, um, I, I love doing proclamations. It's always feels so like the pomp and circumstance and just so official, um, but truly words can't, um, express how, how grateful we are for each and every one of you. Every single person who works with a student is an educator, and, um, and I have so many, my daughter's a senior this year, and I just have so many people, um, in her life over the years that have, um, you know, shaped her and cared for her and asked how she was doing, um, throughout her day. So I thank each and every one of you, and I'm sorry that we're pronouncing some of these after the fact, so I hope you are all honored in your buildings. Um, and yes, truly from the bottom of my heart as a parent and also as a board member, thank you each and everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to echo what everybody else said. Uh, we, we, we say, we can't say it enough how important you guys are to the, the community. Um, you guys are, are handling our, our most valuable asset as, as a, as a society every, every single day, and, um, handling all the, uh, dynamic issues that we have to deal with in the, in these days and ages. So, um, I'll, I always kind of just reiterate that you're overworked and underpaid, and, and it takes a special person to, to be a teacher, uh, you know, to a degree it's a form of charity, and, um, here at D6 we have, um, this most special of those special people. Um, Dr. Pilch always takes it, says it takes a lot to, to be at D6, and, and, um, we just want you guys to know top to bottom and bottom to top that we, we really appreciate everything you guys do day in and day out, and, um, we wish we could do more, and we could celebrate you every day, and, and we do, but, um, this was a, a token that we could formalize and put into words and, and, and do that. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Dr. Campus Betsy?
And so, yeah, just want to, um, express my, my appreciation for each person working in our buildings, in administration, who wakes up and thinks about how we're gonna make our students in District Six successful. Um, I forget if it was Dr. Pilch who mentioned that she remembers her school lunch lady's name, um, and that's a memory I have growing up. Um, her name was Brenda, so it was hard to forget. Um, but I just remember, um, it, right, like we, we think of teachers, my sister's a teacher, so I, I, um, feel like I, I know that they do so much for our kids. They're the boots on the ground, they're in the trenches, um, but it takes, it takes the whole village. It takes the teacher, the nurse, um, our school lunch ladies, our, our PE teachers, and then the admin folk who, um, sometimes, you know, the big bosses don't, they don't get seen as much as, as the heroes, um, but really their, their jobs, um, although they might look different than teaching in front of a classroom, and, um, they're resolving, you know, a lot of social problems, um, that their students are facing in, in their home lives and, and, and that sort of thing. Um, each and every one of you is a hero and should be celebrated, and I know a proclamation like, um, Natalie and Kyle mentioned feels a little trite or, uh, you know, inconsequential. It, I, I hope that you hear our, our appreciation through it, that, that we really do see, um, see you and, and applaud, um, the work that you do.
Mr. Norwood?
Just want to echo what everybody else has said. As a former teacher, every spoke in a school makes the big wheel turn, from the support staff to the janitors to, uh, everybody that's involved, and, um, every day, teachers get a chance to make a difference in the life of their students, and they do. So, thank you to all of you that work in the schools. Thank you to all of you that support the schools. You really are rock stars.
Thank you, Mr. Norwood. Um, I'd like to invite, uh, our GEA President and also our Classified Council interim president to the podium, uh, to, uh, to receive this, this recognition. And, but before we vote, I just, I, I wanted to invite you first, just so in case you had anything that you did want to say. You certainly are not required to say anything. But you are welcome, um, to say something if you so choose.
All right, well, um, thank you for that. Erin Snyder, elementary educator currently serving as our, um, Greeley Education Association President, and this is Joaquin Morado.
Joaquin Morado.
Camp hero for all things necessary to make everything happen during the day.
I wish.
Representing all of those other folks that we could not, um, do the actual student contact curriculum stuff without.
Right.
First of all, thank you. I appreciate what you are saying, and I think that all of us hear what you're saying. I just wanted to make note that we are grateful for the collaboration to show appreciation in our negotiations, that willingness to have that collaboration with our compensation and creating those positive working and learning environments. Like, I feel like I don't need to say anything because we have our Council of Student Reps that are like, oh yeah, we're doing a good job. Um, but that makes a big difference. If anybody's scrolling on social media, it's like, oh yeah, thank us with a raise, thank us with compensations. They thank us for all of these things. And you guys have been willing to put your, um, money where your mouth is, or however you want to say that, but like, you often say thank you, and so we hear you, we appreciate you as well. Thank you. The only folks we don't have up here with us are our bosses, which is a little bit weird, but also they have a hard job, and so we would appreciate them as well. So, thank you. And Joaquin, if you get us talking, I'll just stop.
No, that's okay. I just, I just wanted to thank everybody for the opportunity. Um, it's my first go-around, so, uh, looking forward to it. Look forward to being a voice for the entire district, for all classified, and for custodial and everybody else. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you both. So there's, uh, we just need to vote. Dr. Pilch, is, was there something? I saw you, I thought you were reaching for your microphone, sorry. Um, but I didn't want to leave you out. Um, we do need to vote on this proclamation, so Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Ozari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campus Betsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is our Superintendent's Report. So, Dr. Pilch, I will give it back to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. Um, and I, it, it's a night of a lot of celebrations, and it's the right time of year to do that. And I'll just start with the big celebrations coming up here in, um, a week, no, two weeks from, how many days? Ten days? Ten days, though, tell me ten days. Not a week, not two weeks, but ten days. We're gonna start our graduations, and, and we will see, um, you know, over a thousand students graduate here in District Six, and it is, it is a very special time because at the end of the day, that's really what it's about, is getting every student to that graduation and across that stage and into their, their career in college. And so, um, lots of congratulations to our graduates, and, and I know you all look forward to celebrating at those graduations with me and with our team. Um, I'd also like to recognize in my Superintendent's Report, Dr. Stacy Dattery. This is her last school board meeting with us tonight, and, um, Stacy was here well before I got here. She served seventeen years here in District Six, and we have, we have watched her son grow up. So, uh, he graduated high school this year, and, and Stacy, um, as I understand it, became his mother her first year here, uh, in District Six. And so Stacy has grown up right alongside Aiden, and Stacy's grown up and is leaving us to be Superintendent of Schools in the Lewis Palmer School District in, uh, in the Colorado Springs area. And I couldn't be more proud of her than I am. She, she, she's absolutely ready for this job. Um, she carries a, a significant amount of, of knowledge and work, and, um, and just day-to-day business here in District Six with her every single day, and she will truly be missed, deeply missed, and, and yet she leaves a legacy here, uh, of leaders who she has developed and prepared for, for, for their next work, and she leaves a legacy of, of all of the work she's done here in District Six. And she's been an amazing teammate to me and partner in the work, and we're going to miss her a lot. So, Dr. Dattery, do you want to say anything? I know I'm putting you on the spot. She's shaking her head no because she's afraid she'll cry, see? But I would like to give, yeah, she's just going to say thank you. Yeah. So, thank you, Stacy, for your service. your service. Thank you for your service. You're remarkable. And like I tell the graduates, I can't wait to see what you do in that new job. You're going to be fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. And thank you, Dr. Dattery. You have been such a great influence on this district for over a decade. And we appreciate all your service. Next up on our agenda is Innovation 2030 Update Climate and Culture Goal II Systems of Support.
So, President Matthews, this is just one of the many areas that Dr. Dattery has led in our strategic plan and leaves a mark here in District 6. And I think this will be her last District 6 Board Report. Right here, here it is.
I know. Now stop it.
We're going to turn it over to you. We'll turn it over to you, Dr. Dattery.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Pilch, President Matthews, and members of the board. It is with pleasure that I bring to you this last I-2030 update, but a very good one on our Goal II of Systems of Support. And I do this alongside Ms. Kristin Dalton and Mr. Tom Gribble as they have really led so much of this and have done amazing work, as you'll see in our update this evening. It is the, excuse me, I apologize. Our mission and our vision is truly where we are wholly grounded in this work. And as you can see, it's really about District 6 engaging every student in that personalized, well-rounded, and excellent education, preparing students to be college and career-ready. And so, when we talk about well-rounded, we are talking about all aspects of educating the child. And that's what you'll really hear in tonight's update. So, when we look at these values of, all of them matter to our students and our work every day, but truly, these two of, we ensure safe, secure, and healthy schools. And also that we build positive relationships with students, families, and communities are really prevalent throughout this update. And while all four of these are our focus areas, as we shared with you, tonight it is focusing, we are focusing on climate and culture and that we cultivate a safe, healthy, and inclusive learning environment for all, embracing our diversity, engaging all stakeholders. So, with that, Goal II is specifically to support the social, emotional, and physical well-being of students and staff. And there are two objectives in this goal, Goal II. The first is to develop and implement a district-wide plan to teach and embed social and emotional learning practices in all schools. And the second is to develop, align, and implement a plan to improve staff's social and emotional wellness. So, there are three outcomes within this and we will, the first is around all schools having action steps that address the social and emotional learning in their annual improvement plan. Also, that students will respond positively that their well-being is supported. And this is reported in our annual student survey. And also, the third one, that our staff will respond positively that their well-being is supported. And all staff do take now an annual staff survey. And we have those results for you tonight as well. So, I'm now going to turn it over to Ms. Kristin Dalton, and she's going to share a little bit more about the action steps that have been taken this year and the five competencies that those lie in.
Thank you, Kristin. Thank you, Dr. Dattery. So, as we kind of dive back into the update of the progress that we've been making this year, I think it's beneficial for us to kind of revisit our five competencies. What do we want students to walk away with when they graduate this year? So, out of those five competencies, we're really looking at developing our students' ability to manage their emotions, to be able to make responsible and caring decisions, to be able to be aware of their strengths and their needs, also to be able to take another person's perspective, to be able to show empathy. So, those five competencies really are grounded in our Colorado Comprehensive Health Standards. And we want to make sure that as we move forward with students, both academically, we are also looking at that emotional, social and emotional development as well. So, with that, we're going to take a look at our actions. So, the first action area is really around our systems. As we review it, the next steps within our culture and climate work, we really want to recognize those who do this on a day-to-day basis. So, a lot of that work comes from our systems of support out of our negotiations committee. There's been a lot of kind of recommendations and reviewing of the supports that we currently have in place and ways to build and sustain that further. Throughout the 23-24 school year, our actions across the systems have really concentrated on aligning all of the work around social and emotional development with our MTSS process or our multi-tiered systems of supports. All again, to really focus on the outcomes that are positive for students as they move further into their academic and social success. So... The next piece that we really focused on for actions was our community partnerships. This is something that's been a real passion around how do we really coordinate with North Range Behavioral Health. As you all know, we've had a great relationship for over ten years with the organization, kind of keeping our focus on how do we support both the proactive and the intervention needs of our students. So, we have a wonderful model. We continue to collaborate with the CDE around Colorado Department of Ed, around how do we support students across all of their needs, and really around our other community agencies that support us. That includes our own nutrition and wellness department, right? The next piece and really last of our actions is the implementation. So, really, we focused a lot on strengthening our work to ensure that we're collecting valuable data to support and enhance and really sustain the work that we're doing to support students. So, our multidisciplinary mental health teams, our school counselors, social workers, psychologists, all working with North Range Behavioral Health to really review the data weekly to determine what students are needing, both on an individual level, but also at that system level. So, how do we support when we're seeing some trends? Okay? That collaboration and implementation across the MTSS tiers is absolutely critical for us to continue to support students and families. So, with that, I am going to now turn it over to Tom Gribble, who is going to share a little bit more about our outcomes.
Thank you, Kristin. And first things first, I'm going to readjust this gift. Oh my, I don't know if it goes up to Wesley's height, but I will appreciate the extra little couple inches here. So, outcome data. So, Dr. Dattery shared those three big outcomes, the system, the student, and the staff outcomes. And I'm going to share the data there. The first one is the inclusion of social, emotional learning inside of each of those unified improvement plans. And you can see the data here is, we've come a long ways in the kind of very short period of time where we now have 100% of our schools have action steps to address that social, emotional learning for students. And these outcomes illustrates the commitment from each school to meeting the social, emotional, and physical wellness of students and staff. The student data you can see here is that by 2026, we want to have 60% of our students surveyed respond favorably on the four social, emotional learning competencies. And so, these are aligned very closely with what Kristin already shared regarding self-management, how well students manage their emotions, thoughts, and behaviors in different situations, social awareness, how well students consider the perspective of others and empathize with them, self-efficacy, how much students believe they can succeed and achieve academic outcomes, and finally, emotional regulation, how well students regulate their emotions. So, with those kind of operational definitions, the data here is on the bar graphs that you see here. So, a little orientation to the bar graphs here. You can see those four competencies along the bottom, and then along the vertical axis on the side is the percent favorable. Also, these are two years kind of stacked next to each other. So, the fall of 22-23 is in blue, and then the following spring is in red of 22-23. And then, this year, fall is 23-24 in yellow, and then the green, 23-24 is a spring. So, you can see in all of these, except for the one, that we have an increase in the spring over the fall. There's a pattern of this behavior, or a pattern of the data showing that there's a change for students. And this improvement can be correlated to the strong cultural and climate and student wellness worked on through our MTSS process and our curriculum. And while we have met or exceeded the goal of 60% favorable for social awareness and self-management, we will continue to utilize the SEL curriculum to improve that self-efficacy and emotional regulations. And what I failed to mention is this is only grades three through five. So, I mentioned that. The goal is the same, but here is the same graph, same kind of orientation with the competencies along the bottom and the percent favorable on the side. And so, this is our 612 data. Again, this last year is in yellow and green. And our students in grades 6 through 12 continue to show kind of consistency in the responses and illustrating a continued need for social, emotional, and physical well-being and support for our adolescents. And finally, the third and final outcome of the data is focused on staff well-being. Our goal is for 90% of district staff that complete the annual survey respond favorably that their well-being is supported in the workplace. And you can see the data there. That staff who completed the survey reported favorable perception of their own professional well-being. And so, 69% of our site-based staff, and so, we're thinking classified staff and some of our SSPs, those specialized service professionals, from last year's survey, increased by 1%. Operational staff at 69%. And again, that was up from the previous year. And then, this past year was the first year that our educators, including teachers and some of our SSPs, completed the survey, and we're at 66%. And so, while 90% is a pretty high bar, we will get there with the plans that we have in place to support them moving forward. So, with that, the next steps we have are the following. So, we're really excited about the summer professional development that we have lined up, where we will be training all staff there on the August 6th, that first Welcome Back Professional Development Day regarding trauma-informed practices, de-escalation strategies, evidence-based classroom routines of procedures and restorative practices. We'll have summer professional development opportunities. We're looking at opportunities for family trainings as well. And as we talked about in negotiations around aligning our resources, whether that is our wellness team, our FAST team, our mental health teams, all of those resources coming together to kind of support our staff to feel more connected as well as having better outcomes on that survey. So, thank you for your time this evening as we provide this update for the Culture and Climate Goal II, supporting the social, emotional, and physical well-being of students and staff. We're happy to take any questions that you may have.
I may have a few questions for you on the report. And I'll wait as board members bring in, but just say, first of all, thank you. Thanks for bringing us the report tonight. And thank you for your work in this area. And Dr. Campos Spitsy has a question.
Yeah, more a comment than a question. And so, a few weeks ago, I got an email from a parent. I believe you saw the email, but it was, there was a concern from a parent that kids were not being taught coping strategies and were dealing with a lot of mental health issues, anxiety, depression. And the email read something along the lines of, like, all our kids need therapy. Can there be mandatory therapy in our schools? Our kids are vaping and they're using alcohol to deal with some of these emotions. And I reflected on that and I was like, I'm pretty sure we cover that, or a lot of that, through social, emotional learning. So, I was really happy to be able to forward that email to you guys and have you respond to that parent and assure them that we sure are trying to teach our kids coping strategies, aside from reading, writing, and math, which are so important. The self-awareness, self-management, self-efficacy, equally important to be productive citizens. So, thank you for the work and the fact that it extends from, you know, starting in their whole education, from primary school through secondary school. And then, I've said this before, but just really appreciate that out of negotiations this year, a theme that really kept coming up was, were behaviors and needing to kind of double down on our systems of support and strengthen them. And so, just seeing the strategies that will be implemented with professional development and, you know, classroom procedures and de-escalation, all that. Just thank you. I feel like the teachers who spoke were listened to and this is a very, a great response and a good action item that we're tackling as a district. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campos Spitsy. Mr. Ozari?
Yeah, I was just wanting to clarify. Again, is this the first year that teachers and SSPs have taken the survey? Is this the first year?
It is. It's the first year that they have taken this aspect around asking about well-being as a category, so to speak. So, they have taken an annual survey every year, you might recall.
Right.
But they haven't taken this, there were about 10 or so additional questions that asked specifically about well-being. And it is the same type of questions that were asked of the other two groups of staff. So, now it's consistent across all staff members.
Okay, thanks.
I'm not seeing any other questions for you guys. I would just, again, say thank you. I know sometimes you hear things about SEL on the news and negative things. And I always chuckle a little bit because I don't think people understand what it is. And I just, when I look at these five competencies and to know that we're teaching stress management and self-discipline and self-motivation and goal-setting organizational skills, self-confidence and recognizing strengths, analyzing situations and solving problems, and reflecting and evaluating communication, social engagement, teamwork, empathy, appreciating diversity and respect for others. That, when people know that's what social and emotional learning is and what we're, and how needed it is, I think our world understands, people do understand how needed this is. And not just, we talk a lot about our high schoolers and everything that they've been through in the last four years, but we see it in our kindergartners as well, and the kids that show up day one in our district. And so, again, so thankful for the work that you're doing around this. So, thankful, again, for the response, as Brenda mentioned, Dr. Campos Spitsy mentioned about just the response to and hearing teachers about what they need and addressing, giving them greater tools to address behaviors. So, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda tonight is our public participation. As a board, we welcome the comments of community members. And we dedicate a portion of each business meeting to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments. All speakers are limited to two minutes for comments. Our board members typically will not respond or engage in discussion, but we will ask our district staff to respond as appropriate. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to the board secretary. This board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect. And we expect all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Speakers are responsible for their own speech. And all remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. Anyone who disturbs order may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. We ask all speakers and those in attendance to conduct themselves in a dignified and non-disruptive manner, cheering, snapping, clapping, and other distractions are not allowed during or upon completion of any public comment. With that read, our first speaker tonight is Ms. Maria Foster. Welcome, Ms. Foster. Thank you for being here. And we'll have two minutes. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. I was just going to congratulate all the graduating seniors. It's a lot of hard work to get across that line. And then, kudos to all the District 6 staff that helped support you in getting across that line. As I've mentioned in the past, both my parents were teachers. And so, besides at home hearing about what was going on in the classroom and about the kids they were teaching, I also realize the importance of what a good custodian can make a huge difference in the life of a teacher. What a good bus drivers who show up on time can make a huge difference for teachers. So, it's all the staff. It's not just the teachers because clearly they're doing a huge chunk of work, but it's all the paraprofessionals, it's the school nurses, it's the counselors, it's the custodians, it's the bus drivers, it's anybody basically in that building, it's administration. Again, I can remember my parents... Again, I can remember my parents talking about when they had, felt they had support of an administrator in their building, how much better life was and how much easier their job was to actually engage with the students. So kudos to everybody in the district, and I, I hope the graduation ceremonies go off well, and congratulations again to all the graduating seniors.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Next tonight, we have Ms. Ellen Foster. Welcome, Ms. Ellen Foster, and thank you for being here.
For this opportunity, I was not able to attend the last school board meeting, so I watched from the comfort of my living room, and a number of things made me really happy. I'm sorry I did not have time to review it to get everyone's names, so I apologize to people I'm going to refer to. I was really impressed by the young man who had his poem selected to be set to music and performed. To me, my heart just sang because you could see that he viewed himself in a whole different way, that accomplished something that had never occurred to him that he could accomplish. So that was amazing to watch. The two teacher find scholarship recipients. I was impressed by not only their passion, but their desire to be role models and to create a safe and welcoming environment for all the students that they might interact with, and I certainly hope they do come back to District Six because they seem like amazing people. I was also impressed with the report on the negotiations. Being old and having taught for a long time and a long time ago, I remember some years where teachers were asked to picket the school board during negotiations, where teachers were asked to adhere strictly to the duties in their contract and not to do anything extra. And there was just a lot of acrimony, and it was wonderful to hear that it was really a collegial process, not an adversarial process, that everybody seemed satisfied with the result, knowing that nobody gets everything they want. But those three things made my heart sing last time. So thank you for your part in all of that.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Next tonight, we have Mr. Brian Sullivan. Welcome, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, first I'd like to say I've never seen a group of people that want to destroy and weaken our youth, not to mention the masking qualities of our young men with DEI and social and emotional learning. Pretty sad. I'd like to ask actually the student reps if you know anything that has to do with your rights and freedoms. I know I probably won't get an answer out of you, but the people that sit on the school board absolutely want to take those away from you. Most of them, I wouldn't say, Rob. Mr. Matthews, the rules and policies you read before public participation are unconstitutional and will lead everybody on this board to individual lawsuits if you continue to deny the American citizens of their First Amendment rights. Mr. Matthews, you should pay close attention to the next four case laws I read. Payne versus Pauli, Beck versus the City of Upton, Johnson versus Campbell, and the 1971 case of Cohen versus California. The First Amendment protects us from, against government limits on our freedom of expression. The First Amendment provides government from requiring you to say something you don't want to or keeping you from hearing words that are read. Freedom of expression is upon public questioning is, freedom of expression upon public questions is secured by the First Amendment so that debate and public issues should not be uninhibited, robust and wide open. Michael Matthews, Mrs. Nash, Mr. Ozari, Kyle Bentley, Brenda Campos Spitsy, and Deidre Pilch, you are all in violation of your oath of office that you took when you took these seats, and you are traitors to the American Constitution and the United States of America.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. That concludes our public participation. Next tonight, we have our consent agenda.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves items presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Saying none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Ozari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next tonight, we have our advanced placement curriculum adoption. This is also an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the adoption of advanced placement curriculum as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Before we open this up or bring up Dr. Dattery again, Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say on this adoption?
Thank you, President Matthews. I, I will just say that we bring these to you having followed board policy and, and looked to our state standards to make this recommendation and just remind you all that we do this, are able to do this as a result of our middle levy override dollars. And we began adopting new curriculum about seven years ago when we passed the mill, the first mill levy override, and we are now in that second round of curriculum adoption with the middle school communication arts curriculum. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Dattery and Dr. Dagan Andrews.
Thank you again Superintendent Pilch, President Matthews, and members of the board. Tonight alongside Dr. Andrews, I am bringing, we are bringing forward rather, a recommendation from the Advanced Placement first tonight around the Curriculum Adoption Committee work for French materials. And it is brought to you not only, brought forward not only from the, the AP Curriculum Adoption Committee, but also our District Curriculum Council. This actually will complete a six-year process of updating our AP curriculum resources. And in the next few slides, we will share with you the process and results of the work of the committee. So the resource, resources being brought forward to you for consideration are AP French Language and Culture. That is the course name. And they've been a little inconsistent, and we talked about that earlier in the work session. Not all of our high schools have all utilized the same resources in all of these courses until the last six years where we have now brought all of that into alignment. So we're very grateful to our voters and to you all in approving these resources and in considering this one brought forward to you tonight. In addition, not only have they been inconsistent, but the landscape of instruction has changed over time in our AP courses to really fully prepare our students for college and career readiness, both in traditional and digital components of curricular resources. So it is important that we bring these forward to you, to you this evening for your consideration. The purpose of these new textbooks and digital platforms is actually threefold. First, it will provide updated resources that our students need to align with the new suite of online classroom supports, including unit guides and exam descriptions that College Board introduced for advanced placement courses back in the 2019, 2020 school year. And that's when we began much of these adoption processes forward to you for the AP curriculum. Additionally, the College Board created the Advanced Placement Equity and Access Policy to promote equitable access to advanced placement courses and encourages the elimination of barriers for students that ultimately at one point in time would restrict them, all students, from access to these courses. And finally, in order to meet the expectations for the rigor of AP courses, students need explicit instruction that facilitates that meaningful discourse by posing rich inquiry questions and promoting productive struggle. These criteria were considered by the AP Curriculum Adoption Committee during the curriculum review process so that these new resources would be aligned to the expectations of College Board for our AP courses. So these are the teachers that served on the AP Curriculum Adoption Committee, and it is with sincere thanks and appreciation that I share with you who they are. And along, in addition to these amazing individuals that dedicated a lot of time and energy into this curriculum adoption process, I also would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the work of Ms. Amanda Krieger. Not only has she been a part of this AP adoption process this year with these amazing teachers, but also with every other AP Adoption Committee group that has gone before in the past six years, and we just truly appreciate all of the work that you've done. So thank you. The dialogue and debate between these educators created conversations that truly pushed forward the, the thinking as the resources were strategically evaluated so that truly the highest quality of materials were chosen to best meet the needs of our students. So I'm now going to turn it over to Ms., Dr. Andrews rather, and he is going to share with you briefly the outline and the, of the process that we have gone through. Thank you, Dr. Andrews.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery, and I, I just want to emphasize the great work that Amanda has done. Amanda Krieger's been amazing in this process, and she's helped us refine this adoption process over time, so I just can't thank her enough as well. And so before I present the recommendation, I will take you through the process followed by the Curriculum Adoption Committee leading to this tonight's proposal. The first phase involved review of the AP Equity and Access Policy and the philosophy of access and equity for all students to rigorous classes. In second phase, the, the committee discussed the current resources being utilized and reviewed the recommendation of resources from the College Boards. Moving to the third phase, the committee reviewed the rubric as defined by previous AP committees to meet the specific requirements of the College Board for AP courses. Following this, in phase four, the committee viewed vendor presentations allowing members to pose questions and gave comprehensive insights into the digital platform associated with one of the resources. Phase five provided staff and community members with opportunities to provide feedback. The culmination of the committee's work involved carefully considering both rubrics and scores and feedback to reach a consensus on the highest quality resources that best align with the success criteria for the AP French Language and Culture exam. The total cost for AP French Language and Culture, thank you, text and digital resources is $34,357.29 and was budgeted in the 2023-24 MLO budget. The team is recommending three resources because each has a specific purpose in supporting language acquisition. I'm going to pronounce some French words to the best of my ability, so I appreciate your, your grace as I go through this. Chez New is a monthly magazine from Scholastic that includes current events for students to practice with language in an authentic and high-interest way. Une fois pour tous, from, from Pearson-Savas, provides intense and comprehensive grammar practice, prepares students for the exams. And Entre Culture Français, I'm just going to say four, from Wayside aligns with both AP and IB themes and combines a standards-based approach to teaching the French language and culture. The process for this committee has been rigorous, as evidenced by the materials in your board packet, and they have been meticulously, meticulous in choosing the most appropriate instructional resources for this advanced placement course. These resources adhere to the criteria set forth by the College Board to meet the rigorous expectation of advanced placement courses and take into consideration the diversity of our learners. We believe these quality resources will continue to provide a well-rounded educational experience in all of these AP courses. Thank you.
Well, thank you both, and you were so kind to answer all of our questions in the work session. I don't know if we'll have any questions for you. We'll give it just a second, see if board members do have any additional questions. But again, thank you, I'll, I'll say thank you for your work, and, and please do thank you, I thank our, our teachers. I know, especially when we talk about French teachers, that's, that's the majority of our French teachers that are, that are serving on, on this curriculum committee. And so we know that they don't, they don't even really have an option to, to not be on the committee. So we're, we're very, very thankful that they, that they did this. And I'm not seeing any questions, so I'll say thank you. And Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Ozari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next tonight is our middle school ELA curriculum adoption, and this is an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the adoption of middle school English Language Arts curriculum as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say? Or we'll just hand it back over to Dr. Dattery. Thank you, Dr. Dattery.
All right. Thank you again, President Matthews, Dr. Pilch, and members of the board. Again, Dr. Andrews and I are truly privileged to be able to present to you this evening the culmination of our comprehensive process as it pertains to the recommendation for new middle-level English Language Arts resources. So to strengthen the support of our teachers in fostering truly strong literacy skills among our students, face the necessity for a new middle-level literacy resource. And that literacy is a, English Language Arts that brings reading, writing, communicating all together. Given that it has been six years since our last literacy adoption, and there have been significant upgrades to curricular resources since our last adoption, and at the same time, it's imperative that we do address the diverse needs of our learners in District Six, ensuring that they can engage with the grade level standards effectively by utilizing authentic, complex texts, and moreover, maintaining a consistent and cohesive curriculum that is essential in nurturing their students in their academic progress. So again, I share with you this amazing group of educators who came together for countless hours to work on this committee and bring forth to you tonight this recommendation. And again, I would want to share with you that Mr. Bill Fern, who's also in the audience along with a few of our other members who served on this committee, has not only served on this committee, Bill has not only led the work, our curriculum team does amazing work, and all after hours alongside our teachers after the workday, they all come together and they work because they're that, they are that dedicated to our students and the, and the needs that we have and, and the, the things that we know we need to do to just get better and better at what we do for kids. And so I thank you, Mr. Fern and our teachers for all of the work and the dedication to come together to bring this to you tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn it over again. Dr. Andrews will share with you again just briefly the, the process that they went through to bring to you this recommendation.
Thank you again, Dr. Dattery. It is a very similar process, but there are some unique components given the difference between AP and middle school ELA. I'd like to describe the thorough process and phases followed by the Curriculum Adoption Committee leading to tonight's proposal. The first phase involved assembling adoption committee and sourcing materials for review, drawing on insights from third-party reviewers, and researching selections made by other districts. Subsequently, in the second phase, the committee refined the rubric to align with the specific requirements of English Language Arts and proceeded to evaluate resources using this criteria. Moving to the third phase, the committee delved deeper into the final three resources through vendor presentations, allowing members to pose questions and gave comprehensive Following this, in phase four, materials underwent piloting in schools to gauge student engagement and interaction. Phase five saw the materials showcased here at the district office, offering community, community members the opportunity to provide invaluable feedback. The three finalists were displayed from March 1st through April 1st, facilitating ample time for input. The committee carefully considered both the rubric scores and community feedback to reach a consensus on the highest quality resource that best aligns with the standards and needs of our students. After considering the final scores and community inputs, tonight's recommendation is for EL Education from Imagine Learning. While all three final resources garnered solid scores, EL Education emerged as the highest quality resource with an impressive average score of 4.4 on a five-point scale. The total cost for the literacy adoption covering sixth through eighth grades for a seven-year period amounts to $960,897.15. This comprehensive package encompasses all essential components of the program, including teachers' manuals, student books, digital licenses, as well as required and recommended trade books. Furthermore, it incorporates extensive professional development to ensure successful implementation of the resource. Professional development will consist of a robust program featuring five days of onsite learning, strategic planning sessions facilitated by a dedicated partner's success manager, and interactive learning walks conducted by experienced trainers to support classroom implementation. We are pleased to announce that funding for this initiative will be sourced from the middle levy override. We express our deepest gratitude to the voters for their invaluable support in passing this crucial funding measure, which enables us to further enhance the educational experience for our students. Appreciate your time.
And again, thank you for And again, thank you for the presentation right now, but also the presentation that we received in the work session, and I know that we asked a lot of questions there, and I'll give it just a second to see if there are any questions, any additional questions before we bring this up for a vote. And again, once again, please give our thanks to those committee members who did the work on this. And Dr. Pilch, I do... I don't want to delay our meeting, but I do have a question for you. Where are we... We've been adopting curriculum now since we passed our MLO in 2017. Does... Are we... Have we adopted all the curriculum pretty much that we need to adopt with this middle school ELA?
So this is actually a re-adoption. So we had done sixth grade through 12th grade the very first year of adoption, and so this is a re-adoption. So we have adopted all of the core content areas. There will still be adoptions that need to occur as changes occur in AP courses, in current technical education courses. There will be some additional adoptions and work that we need to do, but we are caught up and have now adopted the second round of language arts at middle level.
We're starting our second round. I think that's what you had said in the work session.
Yes. With the budget reductions that we're looking at, with the ESTRA dollars going away and the changes to the state funding model this current school year, we have chosen to pause curriculum adoption for a year, and so we'll slow down a bit now, but every curriculum is up to date at this point.
That is correct. I just thought it might be a good time to thank our public.
It is a great time to thank our public, sir.
Because before 2017 and the passage of that MLO, we simply did not have a lot of... and Dr. Dattery, you would probably be the person that could speak most authoritatively to this, but we did not have hardly any curriculum adoption for about the 10 years prior to that, and so you're nodding your head, so I'll just...
It'd taken us years.
I'm on the right track. And so I did just want to say thank you to our public, and this is one of the things that we were able to do with this MLO that we were not able to do the 10 years before.
Yeah. It is significant, the support and the resources so that our teachers have what they need and can then really focus on the instructional needs of students and use those resources to meet their needs and ensure that they are growing and learning. So absolutely, it is a wonderful day to thank our voters and thank all of you for your support.
Thank you, and I don't see any questions or comments, so Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsy?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Finally, on our agenda is our District Accountability Committee's 2024-2025 Budget Recommendation. And so this is an action item that... Oh, no, this is a recommendation. Sorry, I just need to update my screen. Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say?
Well, I would just say thank you for waiting all evening for this presentation, and this is officially Dr. Dattery's last presentation at the podium for her career in District Six.
I know. Yes, it is. So thank you, Dr. Pilch, President Matthews, and members of the board, and now I am going to cry. No. It's a good day. One of the District Accountability Committee's responsibilities is to make recommendations to you all as our local Board of Education regarding the spending of school district funds. In preparation for making these recommendations we bring to you this evening, our DAC members have reviewed the District Unified Improvement Plan. They have thoroughly reviewed our Innovation 2030, our Innovation 2030, and additionally, DAC members have gained a deeper understanding of district priorities and challenges through the discussions during the superintendent's forum, as well as other information or discussion items that were presented throughout the school year. Here with me this evening is Chairperson Nate Johnson, who will present the top recommended budget priorities from the District Accountability Committee, and you have the complete packet and recommendation in your board packet as well. So thank you, Nate, for being here with us tonight.
Thank you very much. After spending a considerable amount of time learning throughout the year, hearing from different department heads, and going through the various plans and financials for the district, the DAC has made recommendations regarding the budget for next year. The committee ranked their priorities on a scale of four to one, with four being the lowest priority and one being the highest priority. The total response scores were tallied to gain an overall prioritization, which you have in your board packet, and the highest possible score or highest recommendation would have been a score of 16. The highest recommended priority for DAC was to provide at least one school counselor in each elementary school and increase the number of school counselors at K through eight, middle, and high schools. That one received 21 points. The next three priorities were increasing the parent and family advocates to have one in each elementary, and then increasing the numbers in K through eight and middle schools, social workers in K through 12 schools, and then continuing the summer school program to provide a robust learning environment during the summer months. Additional comments that were made from DAC include recognizing the importance of attendance advocates and credit recovery specialists, maintaining individual Chromebooks for our students, and annual updates to the core curriculum. All other recommendations and additional comments are listed in the board handout. While we understand that this is just one piece of the budget process, we hope that you will consider a recommendation as representatives from all the schools across our district were present and helped to fill out this priority. We have become familiar with the budget process we work within, and we believe these priorities further support the success of our students and staff. And if I may, I'd like to challenge all the other dads out there to get involved. Those on DAC know my passion for this, so... Throughout my two years in DAC and the School Advisory Committee, I have personally seen how seriously our district takes our feedback and how passionate they are about our kids. Instead of riling up the masses on social media, get involved in your student SAC or the DAC, spend a day volunteering, or advocate for a watchdogs program at your child's school. Most importantly, be involved in your child's education. Actions will always speak louder than words, and if you show up and are present in your child's education, you will be heard. Thank you for your time this evening.
We greatly appreciate the work of the District Accountability Minister. I used to be a member of that committee once upon a time, and so we do. We value your input into this process. It is great to have an official way to hear from parents, and parents who generally get to serve in that capacity because of other ways that they volunteered and are volunteering throughout the district, so we appreciate all the time and the commitment that you've made to the district. I don't know if there are any questions from our board members. It's a pretty thorough report, but Ms. Mash?
Thank you very much for serving. I have gotten to attend a couple of DAC meetings, and I look forward to continuing that next year. I was just curious if the DAC members came up with these priorities, or if we kind of gave a list of like things we were playing with, and then that's how you decided.
So we had a list of kind of key things that were budgetary concerns for the district moving into next year, and we prioritized all of those. The additional feedback, or we were allowed to provide additional feedback from all of the DAC members, was summarized in those additional items in the board handout. So on top of the kind of key areas that were the greatest concern, all of the DAC feedback is included in the handout.
And then maybe just since you have the audience of anyone who's listening, maybe you could tell us a little bit about how the DAC works in terms of if you would like to be a DAC member, how does someone become the leader, things like that.
So becoming the leader was getting involved last year and being a loud voice. My involvement was through some interesting circumstances with my son at school, and like I said, showing up and being involved gets you heard, and it was very clear that the principal appreciated the feedback, and out of that came my invite to DAC and to be the school's DAC representative. The schools also have their individual school accountability committees, and that's kind of the starting place to get involved in the local school level or individual building level. And then somebody from the SAC is usually nominated as the person to be here at DAC and be the school's representative for DAC, but all you got to do is reach out to your school and show your interest in being involved.
Any other questions from board members, questions or comments? I don't see any, so I'll say thank you to you both, and Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote? Oh, we don't need a vote on this. I'm sorry, I keep thinking this is an action item. So I'll just say thank you. Thank you for being here, and we appreciate your report. Well, that is all the business that we have tonight. I will say, just in conclusion, great... good luck to our graduates. We have a lot of teachers, a lot of administrators, and a lot of students who will be leaving the system pretty soon, and so we're very proud of... thankful for the work that you put in, proud of what you've accomplished, and we'll see you on the stage. So this meeting is adjourned.